I'd like to call to order the joint meeting between Iowa City City Council and the Johnson County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, September the 18th, 2018. For the Iowa City City Council, roll call, please, who might do that? Ooh. Well, I'll do it. Rockne Cole?
Here.
John Thomas?
Here.
Susan Memes?
Here.
Pauline Taylor?
Here.
Isaiah Sully?
Yes.
Jim Throgmorton? Yes. Board of Supervisors?
Yes, and I'm Mike Carberry, Chair of the Johnson County Board of Supervisors, and we'll also gavel this meeting in. We don't do roll call, but we thank the city for meeting with us, and let's move on to the agenda.
All right, great. We have, what is this, three, six items on the agenda, plus other topics that might come up, and an opportunity for public comment. The first item is the Iowa City Climate Action Plan. So, tonight, on our formal meeting agenda, is the proposed adoption of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan for Iowa City. As you know, we have been working pretty hard, we being the staff, the consultant, the steering committee, and so on, have been working pretty hard on this Climate Action and Adaptation Plan for the past two and a half years. First, to indicate that this, adopting such a plan was a major council priority. Second, to set clear goals in terms of reducing emissions of greenhouse gases. Third, to create a steering committee consisting of a diverse mix of 13 individuals, organizations, interests, and so on. Fourth, to hire an experienced consulting firm to provide technical assistance. And now, tonight, to consider adoption of the plan. So, reasonably good timing, I think, because just last week, the Global Climate Action Summit closed with a strong call to action, and I don't want to elaborate on that, but it was an impressive mix of people, a large number of people, and organizations, and mayors, and governors, and whatever. And just this past weekend, much of North Carolina was inundated, and still is, by massive amounts of water produced by Hurricane Florence. So, we believe there's good reason to be doing what we're doing. But we wanted to give you all an opportunity to say anything you wanted to say to us about the Climate Action Plan. Otherwise, we'll be moving on it tonight.
Jim, you know, climate change and working on climate change has been something I've done professionally since the year 2000, and I wholeheartedly applaud personally and endorse this Climate Action Plan. I know we worked with the city almost 10 years ago on the Cool Cities Program, and with Brenda Nations and your other staff, and so, to me, this is the culmination of a really, really good start, and any help that the county can give on this, you know, we have a sustainability staff as well. So, if I had a vote tonight, I would vote yes on this.
You don't.
Yeah, that's right, you don't.
Exactly. I said, "if."
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't, nobody else has to praise this or anything. I'm not looking for praise. I just want to make sure that you all know this is happening, and we feel pretty good about it. Okay?
Can I ask a question, Jim?
Yeah, sure.
Maybe Brenda would have to answer this, but how frequently are the staffs from Johnson County and Iowa City talking about this?
Brenda, could you perhaps address that?
And is there anybody missing from the conversation that should be there?
Yes, I'm on a monthly call with Becky. She's a part of the Heartland Network, and so, we're also come to the meeting for her quarterly sustainability group meetings, and so, she's kept abreast of that way. And also, in our plan, we're hoping to work with the counties, especially with emergency management planning, and your public health for adaptation reasons. So, we're hoping to collaborate as we move forward.
Thank you. Maybe I could add, excuse me, Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I also would like to thank Brenda and Iowa City for collaborating with us on the Solarize Group Solar Project. I believe 180 homes will be, and businesses will be installing solar because of that program, and over a megawatt of solar installed. So, we couldn't be prouder of what the citizens of Johnson County have done, but it was working with the city of Iowa City and other entities within the county that made this a real success.
Yeah, great. I guess the other thing I was going to add, Mike, is that one of the, another element that we're going to be addressing tonight is a recommendation from the Climate Action Steering Committee, that after, after we presume that we adopt this plan tonight, they would disband, and, but they're recommending that we create, I don't remember the exact title, but an advisory board that would consist of those original members, plus probably a few others from specific organizations or interests that maybe weren't considered fully enough beforehand. Yeah. Okay, I guess we can move on to the second topic, which would be a construction update from Iowa City, and Rod, no, Jason Havel's going to give us an update. Good evening, Jason, how are you?
I'm doing well. How about yourself?
Great.
Jason Havel, city engineer for City of Iowa City. Just to give you a brief update of construction projects, the major construction projects that we have going on, obviously, you don't have to go very far to run into one. Kicking things off, Gateway Project, that one is still ongoing with completion, substantial completion, we're hoping for yet this year. A couple of the major items that are still left, we still have some southbound paving left to do. The Park Road Bridge is open, but not fully. They still have some utility work that's going on with the bridge, and still finishing that up, and then hopefully have those remaining lanes open here shortly, as well as some traffic signal work, some lighting work, that kind of stuff. The other sort of piece that is still ongoing is the Kimball and Gilbert intersection. They have some culvert work and other items there to complete, but again, completion looking at, hopefully, this October, November timeframe, we'll likely still have some touch-up work in the spring, but hopefully substantial completion yet this year.
Jason, let me interrupt for just a second. I meant to alert the Board of Supervisors and other council members that this particular meeting is being televised, or recorded by Channel 4, and will be available for subsequent streaming and so on. Okay, thanks.
Let's see, next one, Ped Mall, working on Phase 1 now, which is essentially the intersection of Dubuque Street and College Street. The major item still remaining there would be the stage canopy. The stage itself is more or less complete, and really just looking at completing the canopy. Also have some paver work and landscaping, that type of work still left to do. Looking at, hopefully having that portion of it complete here, probably mid-October. The remainder this year, we would focus on the rest of the north-south section, so the Dubuque Street corridor, as well as the Blackhawk Mini Park area. Again, looking at probably some storm sewer work, the water main work is complete, so storm sewer work, and then the remaining paving, pavers, landscaping work yet this year. And then, in 2019, we would focus on the east-west section of the College Street corridor of that project, and again, that would be all the landscaping and pavers, replacement of those, with completion of that section next year. The Mormon Trek, four-lane to three-lane conversion project, that one, we are currently working on the right-turn lane there on Mormon Trek there at Benton Street, looking at probably another couple of weeks before that's complete. Once that is done, then we would focus on the four-lane to three-lane conversion portion of it, with that restryping complete yet this year. Next year, we will focus on the intersection, intersection patching, curb ramps, and then also the street lighting replacement north of Melrose for that section, with that work being completed next year. The main reason there's that gap in what's completed this year and next year is really the lead time on the poles. So, the signal poles and the street lighting poles, we're just waiting for those to come in, and don't feel that we can get those in in time to get that work completed this year, and especially with the curb ramps, we don't want to be midstream over the winter. So, just kind of trying to stage that. So, again, really completion of the four-lane to three-lane conversion this year, and then the remaining work in the spring of 2019. The overlay projects, the first one there being Riverside Drive, working on PCC or concrete patching here shortly, that'll be night work, so a lot of that'll be occurring overnight, and look at that occurring probably into October, November timeframe. Myrtle Avenue is currently closed, looking at that being closed still probably till mid to late October for utility work, as well as intersection improvements there. So, I think overall, probably looking at completion of Myrtle in October, and then, like I said, the concrete patching for Riverside Drive, the end of this year, the actual overlay portion of that will be in 2019. So, probably looking at April, May timeframe for completion of overlay on Riverside Drive. Moving to the other side of the river, Burlington Court, Johnson, those areas, the surface is complete, so the asphalt overlay is complete. Now, we're just focusing on tying those intersections in and kind of wrapping up those portions of it, looking at that work being done probably by the end of September. So, here shortly, in the next couple of weeks, we'll get that wrapped up. Then they will move on to Governor Street, where they'll do concrete patching, curb and gutter, curb ramps, that kind of stuff. The goal is to have that done, still this year. We're getting to that time of the year where, especially with asphalt work, as we get late in the year, it's going to really be weather-dependent. So, hoping to have the asphalt work and the restryping done yet this year. If weather were to turn cold early, then that may get pushed to next year, but that would be the plan. And then that would include also restryping of bike lanes on both Dodge and Governor. And then finally, just a real quick update on Burlington and Clinton, we still have some remaining traffic signal and curb ramp work there at that intersection, hoping to get that wrapped up here in the next month or so. And then, following that would be restryping of the corridor with, which would also include a four-lane to three-lane conversion for kind of the middle section, as well as bike lanes throughout the corridor. So, I think that is my list of projects, unless anybody has any questions.
Jason, when you say four-lane to three-lane on Mormon Trek and the others, does that mean the addition of the bike lanes as well?
Correct. All of those will be four-lane to three-lane with, which will add bike lanes on each of those corridors.
Fantastic, thank you.
I have a couple of questions about Gateway, and they're design questions, so I guess they're probably too late, but why on earth was there not a right-turn lane put into Kimball at Dubuque?
I think that was considered during the design. I don't know that the traffic volumes warranted that turn lane.
If everybody who drives it thinks that it does. And the other question is, and I think this might be on just about everybody's mind regarding that bridge, and the skateboarders and so on, how did they not see that coming?
That's probably a good question. So, I think it's something where we've addressed from the construction standpoint, obviously it's still an active construction site, so we've taken some measures to help hopefully alleviate that during construction.
Saw the danger signs this afternoon.
And then we'll also look at options for kind of a permanent fix there as well. So, still working through those, but I would anticipate that coming shortly.
Can't imagine why anybody would think it's dangerous to be on top of one of those arches, on a skateboard or whatever.
It's a college town.
But I really want to ask you, did you receive, like, comment from the constructions worker about this early on the project? Because I remember while I was campaigning, I'd been approached by two workers on the construction site who brought this to my attention, and I told them, "Hey, I'm still campaigning, I don't know if I'm going to be there or not, you just have to address this to the city." And they said they sent to the city a letter or maybe an email, I don't know, they contacted the city already, and they said if the design completed, this will be dangerous. And they was complaining exactly from the same thing, people will use a skateboard and try to do that. But have you received those complaints?
I'm not aware of them, but I don't know that anybody on staff hasn't received them, but I'm not aware of that specific complaint.
Okay.
We've received lots of complaints, as you know, from users of the various roads that have been interrupted for construction-related reasons. And in some cases, like on Clinton Street, people have been very, some people anyhow, have been fairly frustrated by the slow pace of work on the intersection in particular, or the intersections. But we've already gotten a memo from staff about this. I think you wrote it and came through, Jeff, and so, it's just frustrating for us, and frustrating for people who use those streets, and they'll be done, they'll be done fairly soon. Yeah. Thanks for your good work, Jason. Any other questions for Jason?
A quick one, Jason, on the Mormon Trek project. Do you know off the top of your head some of the safety statistics? Because, I mean, that's, in my mind, was really the impetus behind the project, was to make it a safer corridor. What the collision rates are, for example, as a four-liner, and what we're anticipating?
Good comment.
Maybe Ken has the answer.
I don't know those offhand, I don't know if Ken will or not.
Yeah, Ken Ralston, Transportation Planner, I don't know what the collision rates are, Mr. Thomas, but I can tell you what we're expecting is about a 25% reduction in overall collisions. And that corridor was one of the higher collision corridors in the city, as you know, and that's why we were also, the benefit, we benefited from the Traffic Safety Improvement Program grant through the DOT, which was $500,000. So, both the DOT and staff agreed that that corridor could benefit from this sort of treatment, and then hopefully we'll get 25% or even maybe a higher reduction.
As I recall, the time travel within that corridor is maybe, the estimates, I guess, at peak periods is a 30-second increase?
Yeah, maybe upwards of like a minute, so we're not expecting huge differences. You know, reality could be a few minutes, but from north to south, it's a long corridor, even if it was upwards of a minute or two, I'd say that is well worth the effort.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Why don't we move on to the third item, so we can make sure we get through all these items in a reasonable timeframe? So, this is, was jointly suggested as an item by both the county and the city. It's an update on the Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center, and Matt Miller, right? Matt is going to brief us on this?
Yeah, Matt Miller with Johnson County, I'm the project manager. So, really, the point of this is just to give you guys just a general update on what's going on. I'll try to keep it fairly high-level, but several of the folks here have been highly involved, so, like Lisa, Rod, Susan, if you guys think of anything I might be missing, please let me know, and if there's any detailed questions, please just feel free to ask. So, really, the way I have this project broke down is into sort of five different categories to help me kind of keep it organized. That would be building, your governance structure, your funding, your community outreach, and your operations. So, I'll give you guys some general updates on what we're working on each of those categories. The big one on most people's mind is your building and your land. We're going through the purchase process right now. We had a 90-day due diligence period, which will be up on October 3rd. Thus far, in all the studies that we've been conducting, no issues have been reported. There is an archaeological survey that we're going to go ahead and go do. Initially, we thought we may not have to do that, but now it's kind of come to light that that is required, so that's kind of the last little survey we're going to have them do. We don't anticipate anything there, but once again, we're going to go ahead and conduct that, just to make sure we're being thorough. Another thing that has been brought up as an issue would be the fact that the property is in the 500-year floodplain, so we're definitely working to mitigate that risk. We have had engineering firm come in and give us filter estimates for what it'll take to raise us above that level. We need to be at an elevation of 646 and 1/2 feet. To do that, we need approximately 5,600 cubic yards of fill dirt, so it's actually lower than our original estimate. So, we're going to make sure that when we build, we'll be above the 500-year floodplain. We're also working to make sure that there's going to be an access point in the event of a flood. The primary access point for this will be on Southgate Avenue. As many folks know, that can flood, though. If you look at aerials from 2008, a lot of Southgate was underwater. So, we have a little piece of property off of Waterfront, which would be just to the west and south of Hy-Vee, where we'll have access. We've been meeting with the railroad, it's the CR and IC line. They've given us permission to make sure we have an access point across those tracks, so we've kind of mitigated that risk as well. In the event of flooding, we'll always have an access point there. We do have a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting this Thursday, I'll be presenting to them, I believe that's at 7:00. So, we'll be going through that zoning process. Our close date is December 14th, but that is contingent upon rezoning to P1. One final thing I want to mention is we've been working with our architects on the actual facility plans. We've had several productive meetings to talk about just what sort of space we'll need, getting rough square footages, what sort of rooms, what the layout should look like. So, we have our architects working on that piece right now as well. So, that's sort of where we're at with the building. Does anybody have any specific questions for me on that part of it? All right, if not, I'll move on to our governance structure. So, this is another major piece, is figuring out how all the various entities and all the various service providers are going to work together. In some talking with other peer institutions, we found out this is actually what has taken them the longest, was figuring out the governance structure. For example, we spoke to a facility out in Portland, Oregon, that has done this, and they said by far that's what took them the longest. So, we're trying to get a good start on that. We've had several very productive meetings thus far. We've been working with University of Iowa legal team to help get some legal advice on how to set up a healthcare entity such as this one. I think after a meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, we've kind of come to a general agreement on how we want to get this structured. I won't pretend that I understand all the legalese behind all of this, but I can say that we've kind of got some next steps on agreements that need to be drawn out. We'll have a 28E agreement with municipalities and everyone involved there. There will be various service provider contracts then with like Prelude and Abbey Center and those other folks that are providing the services. So, we've got kind of a general outline there, now it's just working on the actual structure and getting those documented. Any questions on governance structure? All right, if not, I'll move on to funding. So, that's obviously another very important part of this. Two different types of funding, the way we look at it, we've got our operational funding, so once we're up and running, how are we going to make sure that we're having income for this, to support it? And then your capital funding. So, the next thing we have coming up for operational funding standpoint is a meeting with the East Central Region of the Mental Health and Disability Services, that's on September 27th, where we're going to meet with that board, discuss kind of what we think our operating costs are going to be, our tentative staffing model, and then just make sure that we have their support, that they'll reimburse us for the things we expect to be reimbursed for. In particular, from the East Central Region, this would be for patients who do not have any other type of insurance, such as Medicaid or private insurance, we would want them to obviously cover what can be covered there. Then we're also working on our capital funding for the project. At this point, we've secured funding to cover most of the project costs. We're still a little bit short, but I think we're going to get there. We are going to be meeting with the North Liberty City Council on October 9th to try to work toward a commitment from them. We've already received commitment from Iowa City, and Coralville has stated that they're on board as well. And then we'll also look at additional funding sources through philanthropy and other things of that regard. So, that's what we're working on so far with funding. Next, I'll just jump to community outreach. So, community outreach would be things like this, for example. I want to definitely make sure that we're keeping all of our stakeholders and the public in general informed of what we're trying to do. Tentatively, this probably won't open for another 18 to 24 months, probably in the summer of 2020, so you're probably not hearing a ton about it right now, but as we get closer to the opening date, we'll definitely be having more and more of these public outreach events. We are planning on having an open house as soon as we have a few more plans solidified, where we can have the public come, they'll hear a little bit of an update about what we're doing, look at some archaeology, or, I'm sorry, architecture renderings, and sort of provide their input on this as well. So, we just want to make sure everyone's staying up to speed on what's happening. I've talked to several newspaper reporters, because I want them to be informed. I even met with a student last week who's writing a paper for a class, and he interviewed me. So, really, we're just trying to get the word out and make sure that people understand what we're doing. And the final piece I'll touch on then is operations. Once again, with us still being quite a ways from actually opening, we haven't had a bunch of discussions on how we're going to operate, but a few things we have worked on already. One thing we did that sort of falls under operations would be the Iowa Administrative Rules for Access Centers, we're out for public comment. So, our steering committee met and kind of collaborated on what we feel we should submit for public comments, because whatever the Iowa rules are, that's going to have a great effect on how we actually operate. So, we got our public comments submitted by September 4th. From what I understand, that overall Iowa process is delayed for a public hearing, so we probably won't have finalized rules until later this winter, but those will definitely affect us, so we're trying to keep our fingers on the pulse of what's going on there. We've had some other discussions regarding staffing. We have tentative staffing projections, which are helping us with our, with our operational costs, and trying to make sure that we understand what's going to happen there. We've also started discussions about having a medical director on staff. It can take quite a while to hire someone in a physician position, so we're starting those conversations early. We're also working with Abbey Health to be a managing entity for this. None of us here have a great deal of healthcare experience or running a clinic of this kind, so we want to work with someone who's an expert. So, we've engaged with them on talks to potentially be a managing entity for this.
What's the name of the entity again?
Abbey Health.
Abbey Health.
Yep, I think their headquarters is in Hiawatha. So, that's where we're at with operations. So, once again, those are kind of the five different buckets of things we're working on. Did anybody have any questions for me? All right, well, I really do appreciate the time, guys. I appreciate the collaboration with Iowa City and Johnson County, it's been great working with everyone so far, and please just reach out to me if you guys have any detailed questions. Appreciate it, thanks.
Thanks for providing us with that overview, Matt. It's a big and important project. Keep up the good work. Okay, so, the next item is to discuss current and future transportation and transit projects and issues in Iowa City and Johnson County, including CRANDIC seats, bus rider survey, I-380, and trails. So, counting?
Yeah, well, I put this on there just because there's a lot of things going, and if we, you know, I see Kent in the audience, he might be able to help us on some of these, including CRANDIC, and I know that the express bus for, that ECI cog is running, will be starting in about a week, and they'll, their website, there was a big, a lot of press on it yesterday, and so, we're very excited about that, the express bus. But I also wanted to give you an update on our trails that we're working on. I actually took a tour of both the Hoover Trail and the Mahaffey Bridge Trail on Friday with our conservation director. On the Hoover Trail, which is, will be the trail completion from Cedar Rapids to Solon, and specifically, our portion of that is from the county line at Seven Sisters Road, which is just about a mile south of Ely. That will be completed, about 2/3 of that project into Solon this construction year, and they're really doing well on that. There have been issues, you know, with some retaining walls and a few other things, but the bridges have all been completed over the creeks, and they're doing a lot of work now from the right north of Solon to where, I can't even think of the name of the road that goes out there, but there's just one section there that will not be completed, and that's done in conjunction with the repaving of Ely Road. And then, on the Mahaffey Bridge Trail, which is from North Liberty to the bridge itself over the Corvo Reservoir, the Mahaffey Bridge, that's a separated trail as well, that's unscheduled to be done this year, there was a cost overrun, but we're working with that, but that should be done by the end of this construction season. And then, of course, the county is trying to work with other counties and other entities to basically complete our trail system throughout the county, including the Clear Creek Trail with the City of Coralville, which will get the Clear Creek Trail all the way out to the 80-380 interchange underneath of that to Tiffin. Believe we've purchased the right-of-way or the land to get that Clear Creek Trail then from Tiffin and Half Moon Road all the way to Kent Park. And then, future plans are possibly working with Iowa County and Cedar County to complete a trail network throughout the whole region, which will be really good for bicycle tourism. So, that's kind of the trail portion. But we had just other things I wanted to hear from you, the city, about the bus rider survey, on where that was, and then any other transportation issues that we had, you know, can Mike give us an update on the CRANDIC rail line?
Sure, you want to do that, Ken?
Yeah, real quick, Ken Ralston, Transportation Planner. I think as most of you know, the third and final phase of the CRANDIC study is underway. The contracts have been signed, the consultant's working on those. The third and final phase of the rail study should be done this December, and then the auxiliary sort of what we do if rail won't work study, to potentially put a trail in the corridor, should be done by November. work study to potentially put a trail in the corridor should be done by November. Nothing else reported this time since they just got started, but hopefully within the next three to four months, we'll have some information to share.
Mike, I guess on a related, thanks, Kent. I guess on a related point, all of you supervisors know that on behalf of our council, I sent a letter to the Director of the Iowa Department of Transportation.
Correct.
Concerning future widening of roads in the Iowa City to Cedar Rapids corridor. And to the best of my knowledge, we haven't heard back yet on that letter. We did get, sorry.
I didn't know Siri was listening.
Yeah, she was listening to us.
That's scary. Siri wants to know what you're talking about.
What does she think of the letter?
It's seriously scary. Oh, my gosh. Yeah, we did get a letter from Mayor Donahue in North Liberty expressing the views of their council. At least, well, we haven't gotten the final version of that as far as I know, right, Jeff? So but sort of a draft of their response. So that's underway. And with regard to the bus, the transit study, Darian, do you want to address that?
Hi, Darian Nagelgam with Transportation Services. We are buttoning up the final first draft of our request for qualifications for consultant to help us give a comprehensive review of our transit system, which is great. It's been a long time since we've really comprehensively reviewed. We've grown as our population's grown, but I think it's time to do more in-depth analysis. We've got a lot of requests from the community. And I think it's time to balance, balance things out, figure out the pros and cons and benefits, and get everything laid on the table so we can make a decision about how we want our transit network to look going forward. We're partnering with Corleville, and we're also partnering with the university. So I think our first step is taking our draft request for qualifications and working with those two entities, make sure we're all on the same page, and then really getting a consultant onboard, hopefully this fall, and getting the process started. Any questions on, I guess I can give you a little bit of overview of what we're looking for. I think some of the high, the broad points we're looking at are, we're really looking at the transit network itself. So stops, routes. We are studying an expansion of operations. This is something that we've been getting a lot of requests for, both in terms of paratransit, which, of course, we contract through Johnson County seats, and in terms of our own operations. So that's something we're going to be evaluating. We're going to be looking at fares, passes between the agencies, seeing if we could find some ways to improve connectivity between the three systems. Yeah, so we're basically just, we're getting into the weeds and a few other items too, but that's probably the broad overview of what you can expect the transit study to look like.
What about hours and Sunday service?
Yep, hours and service and Sunday service is something that we're going to be evaluating in the study.
Okay, that's great. And you, when you say the fall, do you mean that the preparation for the study will start in the fall, or?
To bring a consultant onboard, yes. The study is going to take, and it's hard for me to give an exact timeframe. It's going to take some time because it really, we really do want to do a comprehensive review of the system. Like I said, we've been, we've been growing and we've been growing our routes as we've needed to, as population has grown, as the footprint of the city has grown. But in order to really in-depth assess and do a good job, I think it's going to take some time. But we're hoping to get a consultant onboard yet this fall or early winter.
Okay, that's great. But I'm sorry, but could you tell me the study roughly going to take how much time, like one year?
Year.
I'd say 12 to 18 months.
Okay, yeah, thanks. That's what I saw. Thank you.
Thanks, Darian. So I guess I'd like to emphasize that there's a pretty strong connection between this particular study and our climate action plan and our efforts to improve the affordability of living in the city.
Yes.
So if we can really get this done well, we'll make great strides in both of those things, as well as enabling people to be more mobile and get around these towns better, more effectively.
Construction too. It's all over the agenda.
Mayor, I'd just like to comment, your letter, while I really appreciate it myself, and I think that we never took an official vote from the board on your letter to support it or not to support it. Just know that the Board of Supervisors has really supported alternative means of transportation, including trails, CRANDIC, direct bike routes, the express bus, any way that we can. I mean, we are, we're climate fighters as well. And we know that that we need to move to 100% renewable energy as fast as we can. And one of those ways is to to get single drivers out of cars. And and we also know that, you know, if you build it, they will come. And so as you, as you build more lanes, more, they'll fill up with cars. And so anything that we can do to look at alternative ways to move our people around the county and the region will be very supportive.
Good deal. Let's move on to the next item, which is an update on the Johnson County Historic Poor Farm. County, Kurt, you want to?
Sure. Hopefully, some of you were out there on on Sunday. I know I saw Rockney there. I'm not sure who else was on the farm cycle ride that brought a bunch of people out there. We had a, before nearly all the riders arrived, we had a brief ceremony, a little kickoff unveiling, ribbon cutting, sort of a thing for our gorgeous new sign out there. I hope everybody's gone out and seen it, preferably just after sundown when it lights up. The, we have also just recently voted for the public hearing for the bidletting, I think I got that right, for the for the West Barn, which is the first major reconstruction of the of the structures that we're doing out there. We've, we've got some fairly thorough architectural renderings. They're up in our office if anybody wants to come see them. For what we're going to do there, it's going to look really nice. It's, in a sense, it's not going to look any different, except for one thing, the really major difference you'll see on that West Barn is that the steel roof that was put on there, 20, how long ago? I don't know how long ago that was put on there, is coming off and being replaced with the way it originally was built, which is cedar shingles. They also have to dig down because they didn't have the technology or the wherewithal to put the pilings down below the frost line when they built this thing back in 1901?
1902.
1902. And so they're going to dig those out, put new pilings under them so that the, all of this basically, so the barn doesn't fall down, which is our biggest fear. There'll be a couple of, I guess you could call them modern conveniences added to it. That is to say, there'll be some electric light and a couple of ceiling fans and some very rudimentary water access, farm spigots in two corners of the of the thing. Concrete floor will be completely replaced, as will the outside sort of feedlot thing that will end up behaving more like a kind of a patio. We have a prairie that is, that is being put in south of where the two NGOs are doing their things. The top, let's see, that's northwest, 10 acres will be the next section after this season to come out of row crop production. And it'll get planted to rye first and then probably go into more local food. What am I forgetting, guys?
Kurt, with the poor farm, do you have someone that's responsible for giving tours of the poor farm at the county level? Of course, there's Grow Johnson County. But when I went to the farm cycle, the highlight for me, I ran out of superlatives to talk about that event, but was the tour of the poor farm. And for those out in the public that have not been to the poor farm, it is phenomenal. And I think the vision is phenomenal, too, in terms of what you're going to do going forward.
And you went on the one that Brad did, right?
Brad did give a great one. So I don't know, is he?
Brad Friedhoff with Conservation.
Would there be someone else that would be?
Yes, it's going to be primarily Vanessa, although the nature one, you're still going to want Brad. And any of these things are going to have to be set up ahead of time. It's not like there's somebody waiting out there to give you tours. But and for the, also, if you're specifically interested in the history behind the asylum, then Johnson County Historical Society, Alex out there is the one to do that. She's got the key. She knows everything about it.
Perfect.
So it's not an update per se, but I think just to put it on your radar, you know, obviously, this facility is completely in the city of Iowa City limits. And so far, what we've been doing is stuff that we can do without your permission, I think. At least, I think so.
What we can get away with.
But we're getting close to some bigger decisions that we need to make and some, we've got some bigger plans.
Regards to the farm incubator.
And we're going to really need, I think, not just the assistance and feedback of you folks, but probably some pretty serious help from from your staff, probably from a variety of departments. So it won't be long, I think, before we're asking you to really help and partner with us on this. It's, the time is coming soon.
Specifically, I can think of connecting a trail through there, connecting to the Iowa City Trails and using the poor farm as a trailhead. So that would be something that off the top of my mind would be one of the first things.
Perhaps other access from the west.
Yes.
There's a whole lot of it.
So we'll talk more about.
What do you want to do, a lost hour, stuff like that?
Yeah.
Nice article, I guess, in the DI today, wasn't there? Didn't I see an article about about the poor farm? Thought I did.
Yeah, there was a.
There was a reporter out there.
Okay, can we move on to the last specific topic? And that is to discuss Iowa City's plans for electric car charging stations. Jeff Hu might be able to address that. Darian, again.
Hello. So we do have a couple EV stations or electric vehicle charging stations currently in the new Harrison Street ramp. You'll find two of them as soon as you, as soon as you drive into the facility. And we have plans to expand to three more facilities, hopefully this fall, two more across the street at Chauncey Swan. We have two more coming at Dubuque Street and two more coming at Capitol Street. So that's kind of going to be, I think, our first phase of EV charging stations. And I must say, one of the best features about them for transportation data lover like myself is that you can see from your desktop or from a laptop how much they're being used and when there's vehicles there, when they're charging. So we plan on keeping an eye on the usage and sort of growing from that point on. It seems like if you look in transportation planning literature, just in the news that, you know, electric vehicles are coming. So we're keeping really close tabs on, we're keeping very close tabs on it, and we'll expand as necessary. We've also looked into putting EV vehicle charging stations in the public right of way. Meter parking spaces would be the first thing that comes to mind. That's trickier. And and we're hearing that actually from the people who sell them even. And it's just basically because of the power requirements. You need to run power. And we don't typically have a lot of power readily available, at least in a clean and comfortable way in our right of way. So we're still looking for opportunities for where we might be able to to get some on-street EV stations at, but but that's yet to come. That's kind of our phase two, I think.
Darian, are those free and open to the public?
Yes, they are. They'll be public spaces. We do have two spaces currently at Chauncey Swan for two of our fleet vehicles that are not open to the public. But we will soon have two spaces that are open to the public. That's a good question.
Darian, I was the one that put this on there and my main reason for, on the agenda, and my main reason for doing so was a question. We've been trying to expand some of what we've got. And I know that there was a conversation between Becky and the city, perhaps with you specifically, about a couple of the city meters going into the county public parking lot at the at the admin building. And I just wondered where that was and can we move forward with it? Should Johnson County go off on its own instead?
That's a good question. I don't know if it was me she had those conversations with. I don't recall.
It was the city. I don't, I'm not sure if it was you.
But that's something I could certainly reach out to Becky and we could, we could talk about. It's really, it really boils down to, I think the city would be supportive of testing it anywhere where we could find the power. It's the, it's the running the power, which is in the public right of way, outside of buildings. In our ramps, it's a different story. It's a little bit easier. But that's been the challenge. So I'm, we'd be open to looking at that.
Because like what you have across the street with a couple of stations for for your cars, we have a couple of stations that are in the employees' lots and for for our own vehicles and so on. But we don't have one for the public, and that's not good. So we need to fix that.
Yep, I'd be willing to have any conversation on that.
So one of the issues, two of us, five supervisors have EVs, Kurt and I, and I just sent a letter to the Iowa Utilities Board. They currently do not allow charging of EV stations by the kilowatt. It has to be by time. And that's just like going to a gas station and filling up and just say it's $50 for a fill up, whether you buy eight gallons or 50 gallons.
Or pour the gas for five minutes.
Yes, five minutes, right. So it's not on time. So I sent a personal letter to the Iowa Utilities Board to basically to allow the charging for a station of the actual electricity delivered to a car, which just makes a lot of sense. But at this point, we're going to have to provide free charging. And there's nothing wrong with that, I don't think. But we need more EV infrastructure. And so we'd love to work with you on the city on any way we can get more EV infrastructure in this community.
You mentioned the, your ones you put in, you can see on your, on your desktop exactly how they're being used. So you know exactly how many kilowatt hours are going?
I believe so.
Through each, each meter?
Yep, kilowatt hours when people are parked there. And then that's the panacea for for somebody in parking, right, to know if somebody's actually in that spot or not. So it's really great from that perspective as well.
I'd love to have a sample of, I don't know however you want to do it, this meter for a month or?
ChargePoint. I have the app on my phone.
Well, ChargePoint, yeah, but that's with that company. We're talking about the ones that she runs and.
That is through ChargePoint. It is, it is, it's a ChargePoint-based, web-based application that comes as.
Those are the folks that are at Hy-Vee, right?
Yes, correct.
That is.
So, Darian, you said it's free. So who's subsidizing the power for these vehicles then?
So the, the charge that is charged for the, it's basically the parking charge. So they pay for the space.
So are they paying extra then for their electricity?
Not at this time.
So every other vehicle is subsidizing those vehicles?
That would be, that would be correct, yes.
All right.
Thank you, Darian. Okay, item G is other, is there anything else anybody wants to bring up?
Yeah, I have another, Jim.
Sure.
I noticed on your agenda coming up is a discussion about the city's salaries for their own employees. And I'm sure some people will be referencing the county. And so I just wanted to, there's a little misinformation out there, and I'd just like to state what we actually do with living wage for all county employees. When the county decided to raise minimum wage three and a half years ago, we quickly studied our own salaries. We had one permanent position that was paid below $15, but we had a lot of temporary and summer help and interns that were. And so we fixed the one permanent employee position instantaneously. And then we created a plan for four years to bring all salaries at the county up to $15. The first year, it was a variety of jumps to get to $12, everything from $10.25 to even almost $11.50. We still have tiers after that. So like if you're in your second year as, at working at Conservation in the summer or whatnot, you may be paid the base number, but you'll also have this additional. So all tiers still exist. We went from 12 to 13 to currently this July 1 to 14. Our plan is to go to 15 next July 1 and have a broader discussion about what a livable wage is in Johnson County. And our intention is to pay every single employee in Johnson County that works for the county a livable wage, whether they work an hour or up to below a permanent employee. So it was four different jumps to get here. And I just, I know you're going to have that conversation later, and I just wanted to say that. And as a citizen of Iowa City, I'm completely supportive of you paying your employees a livable wage. It's time for us to stop taking advantage of all workers. That's it.
And tagging on to that, I would like to say that I would be very, I'm also very supportive of you all raising that wage to 15, whether you do it in one fell swoop or over a couple of years.
Okay, thanks.
I think Kurt and I concur. And I think Rod, before he left the room, would have concurred with that as well.
Okay, any other topic anybody wants?
I don't have anything.
Perfect timing.
I just wanted to thank you all. It, you know, years ago, we couldn't even get meetings scheduled. It's a pleasure to get to meet with you. We've been out with some of the smaller cities. And our, our hope was always that we could meet with Iowa City, Corleville, North Liberty, once a year, and the smaller cities about every third year. And we got a little off track, but we're back on track. And we, I just really appreciate spending time with you and going through a couple of issues.
Likewise. It's a good thing to do.
Thanks.
This is the second time we've done it, right? We did that tour together.
I think, and we'd met before that. I think this is three now.
Three years, really.
I had two. This is my second one with you guys.
There you go. Okay, good deal. I should ask the public if anybody would like to make a comment to the, to the council and board about this topic, not about which all are holding signs for, please?
Okay, I don't see anybody else. So I think we're at a moment where we should adjourn. I'll adjourn from behalf of, or get a motion from the council to adjourn. Could somebody make a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Cole, seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.
Seeing no other business for the Johns County Board of Supervisors, our meeting is also adjourned.
is also adjourned.